To the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, um, oh whoops. Committee of the whole finance. Thank you, John. We've been someone. Uh, here we're here at 790 Homestead Boulevard. It's now six ten in the evening. Madam Clerk, please call the hall.
The woman Faircloth McCormick.
Here.
Councilwoman Martinado.
Here.
Councilwoman Shelley.
Here.
Councilwoman Warman.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Burgess.
Here.
Mayor Bateman.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, additions, deletions, deferrals. None? Thank you. Uh, committee of the whole, um, September eleventh, uh, twenty twelve minutes, uh, move to approval. Thank you, second. All in favor? Aye. Nays? Item carries. Tab two, motion to place car six thirty-five on council agenda, solid waste residential collection plan. Thank you. Thank you. Staff.
At council's meeting of August twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, council approved resolution R two zero one-two dash zero eight dash seven-two for amendment number two thousand and ten dash zero seven dash twenty to reflect changes in the free service frequency of bulk trash and recycling collection from bimonthly to weekly. This plan will evaluate the current operations and develop new routing schedule with best needs to implement it changes to provide the best level of service for the city's residential customers. And the issue in this plan will include public outreach component in order to ensure that residents are advised of new routing schedules in the best manner. Staff recommends the mayor council approve the proposed, proposal submitted by C.D. Andrew Smith for engineering professional services for the preparation of solid waste residential collection plan.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
Ma'am.
Yes, Miss Warman.
I fully support this, but again, I'll go back to what I said in the very beginning, and that's we really have to communicate, 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 because I think it, we might have, we might see a problem in the, in the beginning of the transition where it's dirtier than we think it should be, because people are just so confused as to what their dates are. And, um, you know, I know that we'll put it in the electric bill, but please put something in contrasting colors so that they're gonna see it, you know? They're really gonna see it, because, um, I can't remem, I'm gonna be honest with you. I can't remember what day it's supposed to be anyway. It's on my, it's on my city calendar, because I can never remember. So, so it just has to be, it has to be communicated that, that, uh, what their dates are.
Mayor.
Yes?
I, to Mr. Vega, I think it'll be a lot easier for us to get that information out this year based on what we did last year to get those, the cards out to the neighborhoods, or we think that it's gonna be as big of a headache?
I can, I can take that. Um, that's a, a big part of this study is basically come up with a, a public outreach program that will basically bombard the residents with information regarding this new schedule, et cetera. The, the whole idea is to make sure that people know, you know, before it starts, and, and they're familiar with, with how the new process is gonna, is gonna work.
Will this include the mail-out? Because I know a lot of people, and myself included, still have the, the cards that we mailed out last.
This will include that as well, yes, plus other means in addition to that.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Next item is finance committee, uh, motion to place car six two-two on council agenda, auditing, auditing services. Thank you. Second. Staff.
Mayor, staff recommends the mayor council authorize city manager to renew the contract with Harcom L.L.P. accounts and badges for auditing services for official one-year total amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. This contract covers auditing services for financial audit, federal single audit, state single audit, and special compliance audit for fiscal year ending September thirtieth two thousand and twelve. Subsequent annual renewals may be mutually agreed, sir.
Thank you, sir. Questions from?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question. When you say if required, uh, does that mean that they are, they will only be paid the seventy-five hundred if it is to be done?
Counselor Williams, that is correct. Depending on the threshold of expenditures for either federal awards or state awards, that, that, that audit may be needed or may not be needed.
How long have they been with the city?
Um, this is for a book of two thousand and six, an R.P. that went out in two thousand and six.
And, um, we renewed it two years ago?
It's been, it's been renewed annually. You have the option of renewing annually.
So we hadn't gone back out to check to see what competitive, uh, miss that it could be now with other?
Again, we have the option, we have the option to renew, and that's why it's been brought for you. Our recommendation is for the renewal of the agreement.
Why, but you recommend it based on the history, not based on price point?
Um, what I can tell you is we did negotiate a lower fee from the prior year. We anticipated a five percent increase in the budget, and they actually came down, uh, seven percent decrease from what we anticipated, so, from last year.
So they have brought their prices down?
Yes, sir, they did.
What was it last year?
Uh, last year for the financial audit itself was a hundred and thirty thousand. Overall, it was a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred for everything, and this year it's a hundred and forty-two thousand.
Okay. So if they were able to come down on that and still do the same services, right? Same services are still included, uh, and we've been with them going on, how many years? You say eight years back? How, how many years did you say? Six?
Six. Should be the sixth year.
Okay. And based on you all's opinion, George, that you continue to recommend these persons?
My opinion is that but for the, um, an internal auditor starting this year, I would have recommended going out to, uh, to an RFP. But in light of the fact that we have a lot of legwork to do with the internal auditors to have brand-new external auditors at, well, at the same time, would have been fairly complicated, and, um...
I agree. But I, I think next year.
For this year, I think this is, status quo makes the most sense. Next year, I would think we should look at going outside.
Yeah, I think so.
Any further questions from council? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab four, motion to place car six three-eight on council agenda?
Move it.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Staff.
On February twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice was approved by the mayor and council with the enactment of resolution number R two thousand and twelve, O two, O three. On March ninth, two thousand and twelve, the document was submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for approval. After their review, HUD recommended changes to the plan. He attached with the amended plan with the recommendations from HUD. Information on fair housing complaints, mortgage disclosure act data, and summary of fair housing goal strategies were some of the sections that were changed. Uh, the listing, the full listing is in exhibit one, listing of changes, which is attached. The staff's recommendation that the mayor and council approve the attached resolution and authorize city manager to implement the amended fair housing action plan.
Okay. Questions from council?
With, uh, Mayor.
Sure, please.
Would these amendments were, were good to go on this? There's no more, uh...
These are recommended by HUD, so we anticipate they should do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any final questions?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes, please. Yes, Faircloth McCormick.
Um, in reading this, I, I think that the analysis is spot-on, is driven by the data, and I think that's very effective. But when I look at the corrective actions and strategies, I still think overall they're a bit passive, because I don't see how placing ads in all the local newspapers is going to put a dent in any of the impediments to fair housing. I don't see how emailing sixty local churches will put a dent into the impediments to fair housing. However, I do see that you're taking those baby steps to get there, baby steps, in that, um, in reading here, you'll be conducting workshops at city hall. Put those consultants to work. Send them out in the community, and don't expect them to come here, because they're not. And then, in further reading, it says that you will conduct workshops at HOA meetings. Well, on the east side, I don't believe you have HOAs, right?
West side?
On the west side, I'm sorry, on the west side.
East side, you don't have.
We have a proliferation of them, but you don't have any HOAs. So if we're hiring them to do the job, let's make sure that they are effective and that we're monitoring them, because at the end of the year, after they conduct their survey, I don't want to see ten responding, again, like we did last time. That is focusing on compliance and not being effective. I think you already know how I feel about the consultant, but let's put them to work.
What's the name of the consultant? Who's the consultant?
Okay. Living man alone. Thank you very much. Any further questions on this topic? Yes, please.
Maybe they could, um, work through the ministerial alliance and, um, and get the word out that way as well. I don't know if, you know, if that's a possibility, but, 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 I mean, that would be, I think, the, one of the best choices, um, because, you know, they're in the area that we need to really focus on, so that would be a suggestion, is go through the, the churches as well.
Mayor.
I agree with you, Miss Faircloth. They, they, they really, you really need to, we need to reach the people that really need it.
Yes. Yes, Miss, yes, Mr. Williams.
Uh, Mayor, um, this is to, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Faircloth McCormick. What, did, did you offer any other suggestions to, to this?
I'm just saying they need to be out in the community. I think the seminars are great, but they need to be right into the stick of things in our communities and not at city hall, and just sending email blasts and putting ads out there, because that's not effective. I want to see them more hands-on, because I believe their office is how many miles away? They need to come down to the city of Homestead and not push emails and ads from their computers.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Yes?
She answered.
Any, any final questions on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
If they come down here and work.
Okay. Tab six, motion to place car number six two-four on council agenda, lease agreement with Homestead Main Street. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
May I just can't forget about my holiday decorations?
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. I got you. I, I checked it off. I, I was ahead of myself. I'm trying to get out of here. Motion to place car six one-eight on council agenda, holiday decorations.
Yes.
Thank you, second. All right. Thank you, staff report.
Clark Sales Display will furnish all labor equipment and materials as required for installing holiday decorations for the holiday season November two thousand and twelve through January two thousand and fifteen. Decorations include lighted decorations, pole trim, garland, lawn, standing seven-foot candy canes, and Christmas tree, minimum of twenty-three feet. Staff recommend the mayor and council authorize city managers to award bid number two zero one-two-three-eight, holiday decorations, most responsive, responsible bid. Clark Sales Display, the amount of sixty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Mayor.
Yes, Miss Warman.
Um, I just wanna say that I wanna commend the Parks and Parks Department for doing so much research on this. I, I, I did a little bit, but not a whole lot, but, um, um, this is the same, Dennis Correctness, I'm wrong in any of this, but this is the same company that we've used before, and they were significantly lower. Uh, what was it, about, what, forty thousand dollars?
Yes, Councilwoman War, I mean, uh, Warman, that, that is correct. Um, I think Clark was, uh, the one that was the vendor in the past, and they did beat the other people for like forty or fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, up significantly, and we looked at the decorations from the more expensive companies, thinking, thinking, well, maybe we're missing something here, and they were nice and all. No offense if you're listening, but, but, I mean, I mean, ours is very nice, and we kept it pretty much just the same as we had it before, so just wanna put that in there. You might wanna have something to add, Dennis?
Just to let the mayor and council know that, uh, we did keep it in the same areas. Uh, at first, I thought maybe I'd do some more, little extra in the downtown area, but once I got the price back, I cut it down and kept it to the same thing. The only thing I let them know is we weren't too happy with the Christmas tree at Losner Park. It was real tall, but real skinny, so they told me suggestion-wise was go with a platform tree, which is more fuller. So that raised the price. We paid two thousand last year, and this one was like almost six thousand, but it's more fuller and makes it really look nice.
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Um, through, through the manager, have we ever looked at purchasing these things and, and what the cost would be, and would that save money over the years, or is it, uh, not cost-effective to do that? I've never seen the stats.
I, 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 uh, Mayor.
Go ahead.
It's okay. I, I gotta say something. We, we did that. We, we bought them, we, and we kept them, remember, Mayor Bateman? And, and, and storing them, and they, the warehouse looked like a, a green grass field all the time, because it was constantly shedding, and, and they were horrible. It was horrible trying to do that, but Dennis, do you have another opinion?
If I can elaborate on that a little bit, it's my understanding that, uh, we had a rodent issue also that was eating the displays. They stopped functioning, and once we have our own displays, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the electric utility was tasked with putting up all these displays also up, so overtime, and the crews were out there constantly putting them up and then bringing them down.
And in this deal, they put them up. Like, like, Mayor, Mayor?
Did you ever catch that, brother?
No, we didn't.
Mayor, 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 just qualify with me. They put them up, like Dennis?
Yes, they, they, the company that we, wins the bid.
The company that wins the bid does put them up and take them down for us.
Okay. Final question. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Okay. Tab six, motion to place car six two-four on council agenda, lease agreement with Homestead Main Street. Thank you, second. Thank you. Staff.
Staff recommends the mayor, city council approve the attached resolution authorizing city manager to execute the lease agreement between the city of Homestead and Homestead Main Street. Upon execution of the lease agreement, Homestead Main Street shall pay to the city a fixed rent of one dollar per year. City of Homestead may enter into this lease agreement. Property is located at fourth, forty-three North Chrome Avenue, and the lease term is for one year.
Okay. Staff, uh, council, questions?
Yeah, question.
Sure.
How long have we been in agreement with the, um, Homestead Main Street? Twenty years.
Councilwoman Williams, um, I'm now taking charge of all the lease agreements, and this is be my first time agreeing with this, so to let you know, I'd have to ask the CRA to answer that question. Maybe we can look at it.
There he is.
In the past, uh, Main Street was actually a line item. We had an operating agreement with Main Street to, uh, offer certain scope of services in the downtown. Uh, this goes through the, uh, the two thousands. I don't know, I, I can check on the exact date of when that began. However, in, um, oh eight, oh nine, uh, Main Street no longer had that operating agreement. Uh, they moved into the nonprofit, uh, grant committee structure as a, their lease has been year-to-year since then, so there hasn't been a long-term lease in the past two years.
When you say long-term lease, you mean?
More than one year.
But they've been in the building for how long?
They've been in the building since before the renovations, um, so I, I'd have to check on the exact date.
And in doing the lease, what, uh, steps do you go through to make sure they have all their paperwork and stuff?
Well, they have to...
Is that in order through IRS filings or what?
Uh, they have to, uh, provide the, the, uh, lease, the, uh, sorry, the insurance that they, that they have, um, and that's pretty much what we make sure they have.
Is insurance?
The insurance.
And you do that across the board with all of the leases that we have with the city?
Absolutely.
And if they are not in compliance, how do we help them get into compliance?
If they're not in compliance, uh, we get a notice of the certificate of insurance. Uh, we'll let them know that they've lapsed and tell them that they have to get us, uh, the insurance, or we're gonna have an issue with them being in the building.
How long do we give them to correct the problem?
We've only had one issue where someone has, uh, had their insurance lapse, and that's something that we're currently working on. I haven't had any other tenant have their insurance lapse.
Okay, but how long do you wish to practice?
Uh, again, we, um, sit down and, and we would let them know...
When I'm asking these questions, uh, let me just be clear with you. Let me know I'm asking a question, 'cause whatever we do for one, we have to do for all, and that we do the same minimum standards, because we don't want any ambiguity in somebody's coming back saying that we treated another organization a certain way, and then give the other organization proper due process in trying to help facilitate, uh, to help them get where they need to be. Um, and do we give funding to, um, Homestead Main Street? Are they in our funding cycle this year?
Yes. They, they received funding through the nonprofit grant committee process in April, I believe.
Mr. Williams, if, if I can elaborate a little bit, um, usually what we do is when somebody falls, uh, out of compliance with their insurance on a solicitation and agreement or something of that nature, we notify them in writing and give them ten days to rectify the problem. Now, sometimes they can, and sometimes they can't. At that point, you know, we take it a case-by-case basis, and we go back and forth with them to get the problem, uh, resolved at that point, but you usually give them ten days to rectify the problem.
One thing, if I can elaborate, one complication we had with one of our leases is that paperwork they submitted, they provided state documents that indicated that they were a nonprofit, but unbeknownst to us, the federal five-oh-one-C-three status was revoked, and so that's going forward. It's very casual with making sure that we both have the state and the federal.
And their, Homestead Main Street, is this state?
Uh, no, they're, they're five-oh-one-C-three.
So...
We, we checked that, right? Mm-hmm.
That they have to file their nine forty-one?
Nine nineties.
Nine nineties?
Uh, I can't, uh, actually call the IRS and ask them. They, you get an automatic relocation of your five-oh-one-C-three if you have not filed nine nineties for three consecutive years.
So we are not going to give them a, this, all, all of our, um, leases are going to be for one year for everybody that we have done?
That's been the practice since I've been here. Um, if it's the will of the, the council or the will of the CRA board to have longer-term leases, they can consider that, of course. I, unfortunately, I was not here when the decision was made to go to year-to-year, so I can't speak to why that was done.
I think if, if, I think, uh, and I've learned, um, so many different ways, that sometimes it's hard to do what you need to do, uh, to provide some type of stability in the organization if you don't have some kind of long-term lease. Um, and I just don't know how well it works far as business or, uh, or nonprofit goes, but it's hard to be somewhere and not know where you're gonna be next year, and you're trying to run a, a, a program successfully, and if the, the owner of the building has something else in mind, um, and you're, you know, planning year-to-year out or two years out, it's, it's hard to kinda do that when you, on a year-to-year lease. I mean, I don't know what my colleagues feel here, but it's, you, you can't, you, it's, it's difficult to, to plan.
Right, John, eh?
Yeah.
Well, it's no different than the YMCA. I mean, we, we sat down and spent a year negotiating that lease off and on, and they couldn't get to first base because they didn't have any type of long window that they could go borrow money. So nobody, nobody's gonna lend them or help them in any way, shape, or form if they're a year-to-year. I think, what did we end up, Dennis?
We got a seven-year.
Seven-year lease. And we're taking a risk with the YMCA and see why we don't do it with other, with the other users we have.
Mayor, please.
Yes?
Um, through the mayor, um, I, um, I, just going back in my mind, I, I know there was a lady by the name of Miss Drier, and she used to run the Main Street organization, and that was long before I was on council, and she was located there in that building. So the question, I think, was how long had they been there? They'd been there a really long time, except for the two years that the council refused to, to give them the contract. So, um, I agree with Mr. Williams. I mean, you have to, and the mayor, I mean, you have to, I mean, Main Street is Main Street, so, um, I don't know if that's negotiable at this point, and they certainly haven't lobbied me and asked me to, to consider, um, a longer lease. It was Mr. Williams just now that made me think that, that, and, and also the mayor that made me think that that might be a good idea. So I would entertain, if this is the time or place, that I would entertain doing this for a two-year period of time and, and make it, you know, start out in baby steps. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that.
Council, Councilwoman Williams, if, if I can let you know, on most of our leases, and I can let you know, the rodeo association, we have a long-term lease with.
Yeah.
YMCA, FOP was five years, with one year after that. If you wanna go with a long-term lease, I just know when I was handed this, it was a one-year to one-year. We can look at five years with a one-year extension after that.
Well, I, I think if, if you'll allow me, ma'am.
Sure, now you're still on the floor.
Okay, thank you. I, I just think that you ought to establish some kind of parity across the board with leases. If, if, um, depending, and I know each program is independent, but I think you, you gotta establish some kind of parity, because, uh, you know, we don't wanna say that we're treating one organization a different way because, for whatever reason. We, we don't need that, uh, to happen, and so what I'm trying to do, and I'm not a leases, um, or anything, but I, I've dealt with leases, uh, personally, and I just know that for a business, um, that you gotta have some type of long-term lease in place. If you're talking about, um, um, upgrading buildings or anything, that you, you have to have some type of long-term lease for the investment to be made, and I just, I just, I just don't, I just don't get why we're doing a year-to-year lease with Main Street when they've been a good, positive organization and to bring things, uh, downtown, so...
I think the parity issue is that typically the tenant will ask for a specific thing, and then we'll, we'll see whether we're amenable to, uh, to accommodating that or not. We'll bring it back to the elected body for a decision.
But how, I'm sorry to cut you off, George, but how do we, how do, who determines that?
Well, typically, the, it starts with the tenant having a need.
Right.
In most cases, the need arises from a capital project where the financing becomes an issue, and it's difficult to, to fund a capital project without some sort of a long-term commitment. So that's typically where it starts, and then the tenant comes to the city and says, we'd like to do capital projects, and we'd like additional terms. Or, in the case of the rodeo association or somebody like that, they say, look, we have long-term plans, and we'd like, we'd like some long-term commitment, so it starts from them, and so I think we'll just keep it with the, the past practice. And in one case, we had a tenant that came to us and wanted a ten-year lease, but again, as we did our due diligence, we found issues, so it really depends on the tenant.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll retract what I said, and, because, um, I said two years, because, I mean, now that you've made the other points, you know, they're cer, they've certainly proven themselves to be good, not only good tenants, but the good, good, uh, a good entity in our city that brings forth our events and plans, our, our, um, our, our social things down there in the downtown area, so, um, if five years is the magic number, but I would only agree with that if somebody has a proven record. You know, they've been with us, and, and they, they've shown, um, their, their due diligence and what they're capable of, you know, but in this case, I'm, I don't, I, I can only go back to about ninety-nine, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, so, but I know they've been there a really long time.
One other word caution would be, if your intent is to go that way, it'd be helpful for us to have a little time to just look to make sure. See, a shorter-term agreement gives the city the flexibility if there's a change in management or there's some change in condition, that the city has control over its assets, and if, if it's a longer-term lease, that there's some sort of an operating agreement that gives the city some oversight or some control over a facility. So if you're gonna go that route, we, we'd ask that you give us a little time to accommodate for that longer-term lease.
Mr. Williams, it's your pleasure. Is that a motion to move it forward? Because I, I agree. I disagree with the manager, because these are, these are, these are volunteers that work under that age, under that whole downtown Main Street. And to me, you're, you're, you're not fostering, you're not bringing them along. They, they, they join the organization for one year, and they go, "Oh, council's gonna change hands next year, we may not be here." And I've heard the grumblings downtown. I've heard that particular organization grumble. So, I think that we need to, we need to believe in our people a little more, we need to back them up a little more, so I'm with you a hundred percent. Four years, five years, whatever.
Mr. Shelly?
As being sure to ask for a longer lease, 'cause that's my other question. If they've asked for a longer lease, then I think it's something we should consider, 'cause I think they're a great organization, I think they do wonderful things for the city.
I personally don't think that they will ask for it. I think that they walk on pins and needles.
Well, I guess my question would be then, then rather than sit here arbitrarily discuss terms and how long, and do they get, should they have a longer lease or not a longer lease, I mean, let's ask them. What do they want? How, how long of a term of the lease? And then, let's work with them. I, I just, my only concern is, is that, that without having someone ask for a longer-term lease, just to sit up here and then decide to give someone a longer-term lease out of thin air, doesn't seem to make procedural sense to me. That's my only, the only thing I raise. As far as five years, seven, ten, two, you know, it, it, I think Main Street's a great organization, so I have no problem doing that at all. But that would be my only question, is if they have not asked for one, then I'm not quite sure why we're debating that tonight. That's my only question.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I, I, I definitely understand what my colleague is saying, and, um, I know, it, it's just, like anything else, they may not, uh, I, I mean, they really just got back into, uh, for lack of a better word, gracious with the city, uh, dealing with personality conflicts and issues, uh, from previous, uh, transition, or two previous transitions ago. Um, but I, I think it was just, as Rick said, that it's been that way since he has, uh, since he has known it, but I, I believe and feel that they, they've wanted a longer lease, they've just not indicated. But I don't have a problem, I, I would like to see, uh, a, a five-year lease or something like that, and your staff and, and Mr. Manager, do your, uh, due diligence and, and, and that's fine, I don't have a problem.
And, but, but...
But I, I, it needs to be, it needs to be a concrete five, five years. I'm just trying to establish some type of parity.
And it's gonna be, a good example of this would be with the FOP lease, where last, I, this year, when we came to you for the capital improvement plan, and there was money to renovate the FOP, some were surprised that the city was responsible for certain capital improvements within the building. So, that was a lease that perhaps was done in haste, and so I think we'd want to just make sure that whatever the agreement is, everybody understands, if it's a five-term, year term, who's gonna be responsible for what, and we'd, we'd like to sit and just make sure we understand the implications of the longer term.
I agree with that.
But, but, follow-up. Just, uh, on, on that, George, um, Mr. Manager, um, even though it's our asset, and we should be responsible for something, I agree, uh, as it relates to that, and that is how you all draw it up and bring it back to us for approval. Um, uh, and I'm not saying that they are not be responsible, um, because we are giving them a, a great deal, uh, to be able to have occupied space for a dollar a year, but in return, they provide a service or quality of life for, uh, our residents that does not have a dollar figure on it, for me. Does that makes, I don't know if I'm making sense in that. But I, I, I think that, um, in, in what my idea of it is, is that a, a organization such as Main Street, uh, ought to be given, um, ought to be given, um, something of this magnitude that they can function and not have to worry about the next political process.
Amen.
Um, they're gonna be jeopardized, and that's, that's, that's truly the honesty of it. That's why we're here, because the, the political process, uh, had personality issues with it, and as a result of it, they were out and, uh, you know, shut down its organization with funding. And so, uh, I'm trying to get the politics out of it, because they're providing a service for our community and residents, that they are not be affected in such politics. And that's where my mind is at. So, that, that's my whole issue tonight.
I understand. Okay. Okay, before we, we move off this, we need to decide here, because we're gonna pass this, this lease agreement tonight, and this lease agreement is for one year.
Okay.
So, we need to decide that we put this in advance for tonight, um, because I don't wanna hear that we have a one-year, and then we're gonna come back and look at this in one year, to give them five years. We're talking five years, so we wanna...
Since it's a cowl meeting, um, you're gonna see this again next, next week.
Okay.
So, between now and the council... So, between now and the cowl meeting, maybe the, the review, you can, you can do your review, or you wanna...
I mean, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not willing to commit to that right now. It's a five-year agreement, and I don't really know all the details yet, so, I mean, I think if, if everybody's comfortable with keeping it in the building, if, if it's the next cowl, if it's the next cowl, that gives a little time. Or approve the first one with a commitment that we'll, we'll come back with an amendment, if that'll make everyone feel more comfortable.
Might take...
I think, I think the intent here is to try not to do things like this on the fly when it involves city assets, and there's, this, there's things that we need to consider before we go, so that, that the agenda will be due in like three days.
Right. It might take longer than that to get the, because it's a longer lease, it's gonna be a more detailed lease.
But, Richard, to amend it's not a big deal?
Not at all.
Okay.
One vote of the council.
Okay, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
You finish, Mr. Williams?
Mm-hmm. Yeah?
So, maybe to get him into the building.
No, I was gonna...
Prove it.
Right.
Um, prove it for the one year.
Sounds good.
Uh, and then we'll bring back an amendment, which will be a longer-term lease, but that way there, they'll have a lease and they'll be in the building.
Okay. By the following cowl meeting, we'll see this on the following cowl.
So, when, so when do we, we know we expect it is to come back?
Following cowl is what the manager said.
Next month, November?
The first year, the first year would be at the next council meeting.
Okay.
An amendment would be at the next cowl, assuming it goes well.
Okay, that's fine.
Good deal.
Yeah.
I need further questions on this item. Carrying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Next item, motion to place car six thirty on council agenda waiver use, use fee, user fees.
There's it, Mayor.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Staff?
Miami-Dade County Public Schools is requesting the mayor and council authorize city manager to approve waiver of usage fees in the amount of $500 for the use of the Homestead Community Center of Banquet Hall on November fifteen, two thousand and twelve, from five p.m. to eight p.m. According to the city's code, chapter twenty, section twenty dash eleven, fees and charges the city council sets fees and has the right to waive parking recreation fees by majority of vote. Miami-Dade County's, uh, schools would like to use the center for the recruitment fair. Uh, the purpose of the fair is to promote numerous programs and opportunities for students within the southern end of Miami-Dade County.
Okay. Questions, comments, and council?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Sure, please, Mr. Williams.
Greg, uh, Greg Zoyer, which is our, our past principal for, um, Mass Academy, um, we, we kinda spoke about this, and I kinda gave him some direction, he had asked about this. And, um, so I just wanna make a comment with Greg Zoyer, who's putting this together for the community. Uh, he's, uh, now working directly with the regional superintendent, so, uh, this is, uh, one of those areas that they're, they're working on, and, uh, so, we've said, why not, you know, in the community center, and I think it'll, it'll be a great event. Uh, would like us to kinda get behind this event and, uh, even show up and, and then make sure, there's gonna be a lot of residents, a lot of students, so I think it's gonna be a really good event. So, I, I totally support this. I mean, uh, like I said, I, I mentioned it to him, and hence it's here today, so, uh, and knowing that, uh, Mr. Zoyer is behind this, working on it, after working so many years in this community, is, you know, it's good to hear, good to know that he's still involved on a regional, uh, area and working on this event, so I, I fully support this.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yes, through the mayor.
Yes, please.
Um, I would like to invite all of my colleagues to come out to this event, and thank you, Councilman Mountainado, for helping to, with the, um, with Mr. Zoyer to help to bring this event to fruition. What this is, is a rec, a recruitment fair, because Miami-Dade County Public Schools has lost about eleven thousand students to charter schools. So, they're trying to help recapture those students back to public schools and let the parents know of the innovative programs that they have, um, outlined in specific schools, the IB program, the Cambridge program, environmental science programs. So, they want the parents to be aware of the new and improved programs through Miami-Dade County Public Schools. So, from South Ridge all the way down to Homestead, all of us administrators will be there touting our programs to hopefully encourage some of our students to come back to public schools and offer it as another choice.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any final questions on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Item carries. Motion to place car six three one on council agenda cosponsorship of the Larry Little Golf Classic. Motion to put it on? Move it? Thank you, second. Okay, yes.
This, this deals with the person, you know, maybe the draft?
Gin, yes, swim for gin.
Yes.
Staff report?
The Larry Little Legends Golf Classic two thousand and twelve is requesting the mayor and council approve donating $5,000 benefiting the Swim for Jenny Memorial Fund on Friday, December seventh, two thousand and twelve, at Crandon Golf Course in Key Biscayne. Donations will be funded through contingency funds.
Mr. Gray? Yes, Mr. Gray?
I, I have some of an issue with this, with this item, and that's because this, this came up, I think, at the last council meeting, someone got up at the dais and, and asked for a donation for this organization, and I think it's a fantastic organization, a fantastic cause, but the issue that I have is that it opens the door for any, any nonprofit to show up at a public comment and ask for money, and how do we, in fairness, differentiate one organization being worthy and another organization not being worthy? And if we don't, then where are we gonna get all this money to keep funding all these organizations, these nonprofits, or whoever happens to ask? And so, that's, that's one of the issues I have, and the other issue I have is that, that this particular event that we are possibly gonna co-sponsor doesn't occur within our city limits. It occurs at Key Biscayne. And so, again, now we are sponsoring organizations and, and events that are outside of our city limits and not potentially directly affected or benefiting our residents, and so these are concerns that I have. And so, in its current form, I, I can't support it as it exists. Now, what I have done is I've spoken to Dennis Mayton, I've spoken to the YMCA, and what I think we could do, i- if everyone wants to support this cause, 'cause it is a great cause, is that we could take this five thousand or, or a smaller amount, whatever this council decided to do, and we could use Robie George, and we, within collaboration with this organization, could, I think YMCA said for five thousand, they could teach two hundred and fifty kids to swim. And so, we could adjust that amount as necessary, and it would benefit directly our, our residents in the area that needs the, the help the most, those who can't afford to maybe pay for swim lessons, and something like that I could support, but in its current form, I, I have issues with it, and so I just wanted to, to put that out there, and also let you know there's possibly another option that allows us to help this organization, but also help our residents.
I like it, yes, Mr. Gray?
I, I would, I would totally back my colleague on that. Um, I don't have a problem with just redirecting where they were happening, and I support you on that.
Robie George Park, Councilor Green. Thank you, sir. Yes, Miss Williams?
Um, for those of you who were here when Mr. Benari came forward, it was very obvious that I was very adamant and, and passionate about, about this cause for selfish reasons, and, um, because I know so many children that really don't know how to swim, but I didn't know that some of my colleagues had already donated, so I can only ask that our, my colleagues, along with any of our mayor and council assistants, let people know, because I had no idea that, that Ms. Fairclough McCormick had donated, Mr. Vice Mayor Burgess had donated, and Mr. Shelley had donated, you donated too? Well, I had no idea. So, I mean, do you see how important it is to, to let people know who's, who's passionate about putting something forward? So, um, you know, Anna doesn't know what other people, well, I guess she did know about Mr. Shelley, but you didn't know about the others until, until I found out about it today. So, there's quite a bit of money, I don't even know the amount, that's already been donated, and, and, how much did you donate?
I think, I did a personal donation.
Oh, a personal, a personal donation?
I should get a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, but, I mean, I kinda, I mean, I have a few dollars left in my account, and, you know, I'm gonna put that towards, towards this as well. Do I still have money in my account? No, this was from before. I hope so, anyway. She says I did. But, but I have no problem with, with the concept of not, uh, doing, I mean, we don't even have to, uh, do the program, I mean, do the swim program through this organization, we can do it on our own. I mean, I, I have no problem, as long as children have the ability to have the luxury to have somebody teach them to swim. And it was a tragedy, and it's so sad that this little girl lost her life, but it's just, um, and I commend my colleagues for donating money to the cause, but, um, so that's why I was so passionate. And if I'd known that people were already donating, I wouldn't have been as passionate as I, as I was. So, um, um, that's my story. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you'd like, we can withdraw this item, and if, if it's your will to, to have five thousand dollars for a program, we don't necessarily need an item, we can just start implementing that program, if that's the direction that the mayor...
Well, I like what Councilman Shelley, um, has, his idea of, uh, his concept, and I will be, uh, very supportive in, uh, um, supporting what his idea is. I think it's, we can do, because when I looked at this, I saw that it was in Key Biscayne, you know, I, I looked and I say, didn't quite understand how it got here, 'cause I wasn't at that meeting. Uh, but, uh, since Councilman Shelley has brought a different, different idea to the table, and, uh, it can impact, uh, some persons in, in, in my area and throughout the city of Homestead, I'm, I'm all for it. So, I, I'd like to propose that we take Councilman Shelley's idea and just, uh, change whatever he needs to change in there, so we can work it and keep the five thousand there to be able to support program, what his idea.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mountainado.
Um, maybe through, through Dennis, um, are you aware of any of the, any other programs that are involved in swimming, with swimming lessons within the city? Maybe, maybe the idea is, I think we're, we're, everyone's on the right track in the sense of we wanna make sure it stays here, and it's directly impacting our, our kids here in Homestead. Um, and I just wanna make sure that we, we reach all of Homestead and, uh, make this available, 'cause I know we have different venues, we've got Robbie, Robbie George Park, and we have the YMCA, what other, um, facilities? I know that Keys Gate in the past charter has been, um, I think, working in this area as well, I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know that there's programs out there, so, um, maybe if you could, uh, give us some feedback or, or look into it a little bit more as well, and maybe bring this council, uh, help us, you know, get to the right place, make sure that we're putting our dollars in the right location, that it's gonna work.
Sure.
Councilman Mountainado, the thing is, I'm getting ready to negotiate with the, uh, I think it's the, uh, club that runs the South Date Pool. Um, they're already, uh, coming up to us to start programs there at the Robie George to look at running it. Um, when I talked with Mr. Councilman Shelley and YMCA, they were willing to, for the five thousand dollars, they'd give us two hundred and fifty lessons for, uh, two hundred and fifty kids at eight lis, lessons each. So, um, we can come with that program. Keys Gate Charter School does let you know they use, uh, Robie George for their swim meets, and they're one of the schools that rent, uh, Robie George now. So, I mean, they're one of the schools that do rent it, but they also work for this club that we're getting ready to negotiate with.
Councilman, I think you raised a good point, which is, I think we should probably internally think this thing through.
Yes.
Figure out how we would implement it, come back to you and brief you on an idea that we have.
I think that'd be the best bet, um, hopefully, I mean, like I said, I think we're all in the right, I, I think we'll go in the right direction, we just wanna make sure that, uh, it does stay here and it's impacting our community, so...
No, that sounds good. I, I love it, um, I mean, I just came back this weekend from, um, Sebastian, and I, you can't see, it's tough, but they have an aquatic program that's incredible, that they held the state Special Olympics there, and, uh, and there are hundreds and hundreds of kids there in that swim program, and it was phenomenal. So, we have a state-of-the-art pool. We just haven't realized it for a long time, and I think Dennis has done a good job in, in, in making it look a lot better already, so I'm, I'm excited about it, yeah?
Great. Okay, so we'll take this one off the agenda, and we'll come back to you with an...
Okay, good deal. Scratch, number eight. Okay, number nine, um, it's public safety, uh, motion, okay, motion to place car six twenty-eight?
It's easy.
It's moved, it's seconded. Okay, staff?
Police Department's five points, awarded a renewal grant from the state of Florida Office of Attorney General. The award is for forty-five thousand, forty-four dollars, and compensation, one full-time victim advocate, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, and office supplies, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The victim advocate will be housed in the police department's community service building, and will provide direct services to victims of crime, including the billing of victim compensation forms through the state of Florida. Here's the financial match of eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is net to thirteen percent of the supervisor salary, Captain Washington. That recommends the mayor and council approving tax resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Florida Office of Attorney General, allowing the renewal of the agreement for successive annual periods upon substantially the same terms and conditions to provide one contractual victim advocate to the police department through Project Start Off Smart Inc., S.O.S.
S.O.S. Okay, questions from, comments from council? Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Okay. And I did, I hear correctly, you're giving up thirteen percent of your pay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Okay, tab ten, motion to place car six twenty-three on council agenda, out of school program services between the city of Homestead, We Care, South Date. Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, staff?
South Date Leading Seat is provided after school and summer activities through funding from We Care of South Date, Inc. The city of Homestead is the fiscal agent for the grant fund, the city pays for the services rendered by South Date Leading Seat and is reimbursed by We Care of South Date, Inc. Services are provided to fifty Homestead youth ages six through twelve at the K I V Police Athletic League Gym. Activities include homework assistance, tutoring, physical fitness enrichment, and social skills activities. Additionally, children who require more in-depth services such as individual and/or family counseling, substance abuse treatment, financial assistance, et cetera, are referred to local community-based agencies in order to obtain those services. Staff recommendation, the mayor council approve the tax resolution authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement between the city of Homestead and We Care of South Date, Inc., to successive annual periods upon substantially the same terms and conditions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
This question is for, uh, Robert. How long have this program, how long have you been doing this program?
This is, this will be our eighth year of funding.
Eighth year?
Yes.
How many kids have come to me?
Oh, oh, uh, well, fifty each year.
Each year?
Um, and usually they graduate out of the program, so we've seen a lot of our kids graduate out, and then I bring them back in the summertime, once they go off to college, because it's been very successful, and they come back and help volunteer, and if I'm able to hire them, they work.
Okay.
So, it's been a good program.
Um, I want, I have you stand up there, because I wanna, I think you do a great job at what you do, and for, for the community, for the community, and, um, um, and I, I've seen some of your work and, and how much the kids love the program and love you and, and your, and the persons that you have just touched have been, has been great, so, I have you stand up there just to say thank you for all your, your hard work that you do for, for those, for those kids in that area.
I appreciate it, and for those that don't know, this is really, we have three programs now, two which are run out of Fika Williams and the one at Powell, so, to the total, we have about a hundred and fifty kids that we're serving.
That's great.
So, and thank you always for your support.
Yes, ditto, thank you so much, you do a great job. Okay, any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
There's not a question.
Oh, there's not? Okay.
I thought I moved it, I, I moved it.
No, Jimmy, Jimmy didn't.
Wake up, Richard, wake up.
That's okay. All in favor? Item carries. Okay, um, tab eleven. Oh. Motion, motion to place car six two nine on council agenda, Florida Department of Transportation Grant. Thank you. Staff?
Police Department has been awarded a grant from the Florida Department of Transportation, grant award totals one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This award will fund overtime for police officers to conduct DUI checkpoints as well as high vigilante DUI saturation.
What's great?
The primary focus will be to detect, apprehend, and arrest drivers who are impaired by alcohol and other illegal substances. The goal is to reduce the number of traffic fatalities and injuries in the city of Homestead. The grant will operate from October first, two thousand and twelve, through September thirty, two thousand and thirteen. Staff recommends the mayor council approve the tax resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement and allow for its renewal on a yearly basis upon substantially the same terms and conditions with the Florida Department of Transportation.
Okay, questions or comments?
Yeah, question. How many, how many checkpoints will we be able to do with this amount of money?
Councilman Williams, I think that's the same question we asked last time about this.
And we really didn't get answered, like?
No, we, we shouldn't.
So, we're trying to get it, yeah?
I hear you.
He wants the addresses, too.
Well, what we try to do, in all honesty, we, we try to distribute the amount of, of checkpoint based on the amount of dollars they give us, so, and if you, I mean, you gotta divide, I guess we have to, we have to take the, the amount of checkpoints we're gonna, we're gonna do and divide it into the amount of money we, we, we're getting to make sure that we have enough to carry us through the whole year, so, my answer to that is, is probably gonna be, God, maybe, in a year's term, maybe, maybe two a month.
Two a month? Yeah. That's a lot.
And, and, just to let you know, they've been so successful.
Right.
Because not only that, we take people off the streets, but they're giving us money to help support this program and the city, and doesn't cost the city any money to do this, so that's what I do with it as well.
As a result of, of, of the program, how many, how many would you say that we have taken off the streets?
Uh, I don't have the numbers on me, but I know that usually when we, when we do these, we usually make anywhere from, maybe twenty arrests, we see, I mean, we tow probably twenty or thirty cars, it, it's, it's a lot, but I, I, I can bring you back the numbers from last year, we just, we just got a grant for sixty thousand dollars just to finish up, up to this point.
Okay.
But I can bring you back the, the numbers and show you all the things that they've done, they've done, they've done a good job with this, considering, you know, people we use just, just in our department, we don't go outside to deal with this.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, we do, we do it internally.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Thank you. Vice Mayor, yes.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to say to Chief, Sergeant Sermon does a super job over there, I've ridden along on a couple of their saturations, and I think the nights that I rode along, Councilman Williams, there was in excess of twenty-five people on both evenings.
Wow.
That were taken off the streets with some, some sort of sobriety problem, whether it was drugs or alcohol, whatever it was, that, that number sticks in my head for some reason on the two nights that I did go out on the saturations with them.
Is there, I'm sorry.
I just, just wanted to reiterate and tell, tell Tommy and his staff thank you very much for all that they do.
And, and also to, just to add to that, is that a lot of time when you stop these people, we don't only just deal with DUI, we deal with, you know, with no license, no registration, no insurance, things that can cause, you know, cause other, other problems within the city, so, and, and honestly, it's, it's a lot of risks, a lot of risks and a lot of cars take off the street that can cause a lot of problems in the city of Homestead, and the fact that we've grown so much over the years and everything, it's a ton of traffic, and we try to place it where we get most of the, I guess the majority of traffic coming, coming to the city of Homestead.
Well, that's what I was about to ask you, is there a specific area that we have, based on the data that you all collect, that you have more DUIs in some areas than others? Or is it just an area that you all perhaps concentrate on, or you just, how do you, how do you facilitate or come to the conclusion where you're gonna have the, the site?
Well, you know, by the guys working all the time in the city, you know, and, and they get, they get the reports and stats of where most of DUIs are made per officer, and they usually go out and try to hit those areas, like Carmody Street.
Okay.
A lot of times, we do, believe it or not, we do US one.
Okay.
And, and mile, which is, you know, you catch them coming here and out of the city.
Oh, all right, thanks, chief. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries, item carries, tab, item, tab twelve, motion to place car six three six on council agenda, Department of Justice.
Move it.
Thank you, second. Thank you. Staff?
Police Department has been awarded a grant from the Department of Justice, the grant award is in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. The grant award is for direct services to the victims of domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, and dating violence. The funds will support one program supervisor, one victim advocate, and one care coordinator through Project S.O.S. In addition, legal services will be provided through legal aid and going to spreading and defense efforts. This grant begins on October first, two thousand and twelve, and ends on September thirty, two thousand and fourteen. Staff's recommendation, the mayor council approve the tax resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Department of Justice, establishing a budget of the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, allowing for the renewal of the agreement on a year-to-year basis upon substantially the same terms and conditions.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Yes, Mr. Faircliff?
I just have a quick question. How effective has this program been with assisting women? I guess, would this be like bruised and battered women?
I'm, I'm gonna, Debbie answered that question, but I was gonna say, we've done such a good job, even with the DUI grant we got la- last year, that they keep rewarding us the grants over and over again, but this one been in for about a long time, but Debbie?
I think it's been very effective. The grant requires us to serve four hundred victims every two years, it's a two-year grant, and, and so, that's, that's fifteen hundred families per year on average.
Wow.
Unfortunately, there's no shortage of domestic violence victims.
Wow, okay. And they're actually...
This is one of the, this is one of three grants that serves our domestic violence victims, and we have the numbers.
And they're reaching out to you for assistance? Because a lot of times, they just hold it in and they're afraid to reach out for help.
A lot do, a lot do, but we just grab, grab our grant, we always, all the people from communities and let them know that we're here, but we're known in Homestead, so we have people walking through the door, the officers send us the cases, what, they're out on the scene, they call us right then and there, and we respond to them.
That's great.
How many years, Debbie?
We've had this grant, well...
Well, overall, because...
Overall, for S.O.S., we've been doing this for twenty-one years.
Beautiful.
Wow, good job.
There, ma'am?
Yes.
And I have to say, I have sent some people there, and you guys are just so amazing and compassionate, and, and if ever there's a grant we vote yes on tonight, it's this grant, because there are so many people that really need help, you know, and only so many people that reach out, and so many people that, that we know about, but chief, you know that I've, I've worked with you many times on, on domestic violence, and, and this is a wonderful, wonderful thing.
And, and just imagine if we didn't have this program here in the city of Homestead, the people, people would have to go to Miami to get this service, and they would, they, they can't even get there, so, you know, it's, it's a blessing that we have it here locally, and it's, and it's well-known throughout, you know, throughout the, the South Date area, because a lot of people have a lot of problems out here to ignore because we're so far south. I thought I just mentioned that.
It's a, it's a beautiful thing, I'll tell ya. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, motion adjourned?
No, we gotta, we gotta do that, okay.
I'm sorry, we didn't, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Sure, please.
I just wanted to ask the manager, um, this breast cancer awareness, that your wife has this shirt on all the way to the belly, so, we'll take the ladies. I was just gonna ask the manager, do you, can we, oh, okay.